Good evening, everyone. It is 7:06 PM and I hereby call to order the July 2021 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me for a pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Where's Joe?
He took us off the question like that.
Yes.
He took us off the question like that.
Stay on your toes. Village Clerks Report, Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, so in the past month, there were 534 trash tags that were sold. Two payrolls were processed. The Deputy Clerk, our Planning and Zoning Secretary, continues to support the planning and zoning boards with organizing their documents and keeping them in.
I know we have some upcoming events, perhaps.
August 2nd.
July.
Well, July, oh, Yard Sale Day? Yes.
You've been so steeped in it that...
It's just an old hat for me. I know, it's crazy. Yes, Saturday, July 31st is our Villagewide Yard Sale. They have up until Friday to drop off their permit application with their fee $10, or they have it at their home, $20 if they choose to rent a spot in the parking lot. If they get it in by Friday, they'll make the mat, which will be handed out on that day. And I think that's it.
Yeah, looks great.
I'll leave the summer rack to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure.
What is this, a 20?
22nd, 23rd?
22nd or 23rd Annual Villagewide Yard Sale Day. I have been asked, as I am every year, you know, why do I need to give my $10? The village does expend some personnel time to clean up the village, take care of whatever needs taking care of. DPW does quite a bit of work to get things ready for that day. We also got a lot of years out of our previous big signs that we put out on IG. They were pretty beat, so we ordered new ones. And that's a $300 bill. So that's a great reason that if you would be so kind as to actually sign up, pay your $10, make the mat, we appreciate it. So, moving on to minutes, we have June 16th, Continued Public Hearing Draft Minutes, June 16th, Regular Meeting Minutes, July 14th, Continued Public Hearing Minutes, and Workshop Minutes. One, two, three. So three sets of minutes in your Binders Trustees. You've had a chance to look these over. Is there a motion to accept all three minutes?
I so move.
All right, that was moved by Deputy Mayor and seconded by Trustee Azrati. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to Treasurers' Report. This is month number two in our fiscal year. And this year, we spent $389,798.89. 389, 798, 89. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report?
To.
Is there a second?
There.
As always, I want to thank our bookkeeper, Michelle Zaworski, and our Treasurer, Bonnie Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurers' Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, bills will be paid. Moving on to a zoning report, which I think you're going to be able to sink your teeth into now, Trustee Azrati, because it's got a lot on it. After several months without one, Tivoli Building and Code Enforcement Officer has been hard at work. You can contact him anytime at bizio@tivoli ny.org. Easy to remember if you're singing to Bingo. So don't hesitate. His work is important and...
And just because I have a reason to actually go to the building inspector so I can tell you that the process is seamless, I emailed him with particular issue I had sent back to me, the form that I needed to fill out. And then we did a PDF and it was done. And he forwarded it to the person doing the work. So it was very efficient.
Great.
It looks like, I'm not even going to be able to count them, eight building permits were issued ranging from Spring Street to Montgomery Street. Building permits were, there were six of those, seven of those issued. There were eight complaints filed and seven complaints investigated. There were three municipal searches and three building inspections. There were seven building inspections. So the zoning enforcement officer was busy.
That's probably three to four times our usual activity.
Oh, definitely. Yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Trustee Azrati, and thank you to Gary Beck for the work he's doing here in the village. Now we come to the point in our agenda where we take public comment on agenda items only. So later, at the end of the meeting, you can talk to us about anything under the sun or moon. But for now, there were agendas as you came in. And if you have any comments, questions on those, now's the time. We'd love to hear from you. And this was a nice thing that was inserted in the agenda by my predecessor, Brian Cranon, the idea being that folks get to talk to us one last time before we might vote on something. So that the comments come before the vote rather than after. Makes great sense, right? I'll just read through these while perhaps you're gathering some thoughts. Tonight, we have a resolution authorizing the adoption in the village, a local law. I'm going to have to get these out of keeping straight.
The Code of Ethics, right?
First one is the Code of Ethics.
Yeah.
I think one is the first. Yeah, it is the Code of Ethics.
All right. So we operate by a Code of Ethics. We observed, last time we read it, that it was a pretty old document with persistent and exclusively masculine pronouns throughout. And we thought that felt like it didn't fit us. And so we are rewriting that language. And that actually takes a local law. So we've had our required public hearing like any local law. So that is the first agenda item. The second one is a resolution to adopt this parking and standing legislation, which we did years ago but never filed properly. So this is another housekeeping thing. This is a law that we enacted a while ago. But we have to resolve to do it again so we can send it in. Then we have budget modification. And we're going to be setting a special meeting for August 4th. And another late today item, which isn't on your agendas, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with United Public Service Employees Union. Our Department of Public Works is unionized and we've had some personnel changes. So we've worked out a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the union to delay the compensation of a particular individual whose responsibilities have increased recently. So we will entertain any comments from the public, questions. And you get a second chance at the end of the meeting, so we'll start to jump in. All right, trustees, we have number one, resolution authorizing adoption by the village of Tivoli, Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli, Local Law Number A, proposed 2021 as Local Law 1 of 2021. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Good job.
We've been working on this, we had some snafus with the newspaper and the public hearing went on for six weeks or so?
Quite a while.
Quite a while, most of summer. So with that, roll call, vote, please. Deputy Mayor Major. Trustee Baldino.
Aye.
Trustee Azrati.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And Local Law A is now Local Law 1. All right, next, resolution authorizing adoption of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli, Local Law Number B, proposed of 2021 as Local Law 2 of 2021. And again, this was on the parking and standing from a few years back. Is there a motion?
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Baldino.
Aye.
Trustee Azrati.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution is adopted. Local Law B has become Local Law 2 of 2021. Next, we have our budget modifications. At the end, so the village's fiscal year ends on May 31st and begins on June 1st. And at the June meeting, we did a slew of budget modifications having to do with the fiscal year that just ended. When we write the budget, we start with the amount of money we know we have coming in. We break it among the many budget lines, but that is in anticipation. So maybe you've spent less on police but more on the building. And so you have to realign your guesses towards the end of the year. So we did a whole bunch last month, so then you end up at zero on both sides of ledger. And there was one mistake in that, which was we had said we had some money left in the fireman's pension line, which, again, thank Trustee Azrati for catching this, we did not. So tonight's budget modification is to fix that hole. We know we can't take this $12,136.38 from the fireman's pension line, so we have a long list of other lines which will add up to that. And again, this is all in the fiscal year that just ended. With that explanation, trustees, is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
See you later, 2020.
See you later, 2020. Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Baldino.
Aye.
Trustee Azrati.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next, we have a motion setting a special meeting for Wednesday, August 4th, 2021, at 7:00 PM here at the historic Lots of Peister Hall. Our regular meetings forever and forever, second Wednesdays and third Wednesdays. Second Wednesdays, we do a workshop at 7:00. And third Wednesdays, we have a workshop at 6:00, followed by this meeting at 7:00. When the village board wants to meet to do anything else, we have to schedule that meeting in one of these meetings unless it's sort of an emergency. So we have some more work to do and that can't wait until second Wednesday of August. So we're going to meet on the 4th. And while not required to say what that meeting is about, it's about this shoreline stabilization grant. And we have some bids out to do some work. And those bids are going to come in. And we want to be able to award the bid as soon as possible so the work can start. It's a lot of complicated stuff with Amtrak permitting. So if that contractor knows on the morning of the 5th that they're to go and rather than the week after, a week of time, this all will make a difference. So that's our special meeting. Is there a motion to set the special meeting for August 4th at 7:00 PM?
Aye.
Second?
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, and lastly, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of the MOU with UPS EU, Memorandum of Understanding with United Public Services Employee Union. Trustees, we've gone over this. And this is for Ralph Torcia Jr., who is, I want to say, been doing an outstanding job recently as his responsibilities have increased, as well as Josh Sella, who's our newest hire in the Department of Public Works. And I hope these gentlemen keep doing as fine a job as they've been doing in the last six weeks or so. With that, is there a motion to authorize the MOU?
Move.
Second?
Second.
That was Baldino, followed by Azrati. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Baldino.
Aye.
Trustee Azrati.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And MOU can be approved. We will send that back to the union tomorrow. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, August 18th, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM right here at the historic Lots of Peister Hall. And as I stated earlier, we always have a regular workshop on the second Wednesday that is going to be ours, 11th at 7:00. Moving on to committee reports. Trustee Azrati, please.
I don't have much to report on tonight.
All right. That sounds great. I'm a little jealous. Trustee Baldino.
I have my first report I've had.
Would you like to read the court report?
Yeah, sure. I'll read the whole thing.
Second, the back page is fine.
The back page, the back of the surcharges and civil fees.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So this month, we had total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller in fines $350, surcharge is $143, civil fees are $20, and the total, bring the total to $513.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Major.
Okay, lots of things going on, lots of indoor things going on, you know. If you're vaccinated, you can be on that still and keep your distance. But at Historic Red Hook on July 31st, after you have got the fill of tagsell in Tivoli, go down to the Alton North Red Hook, you can hear the T McCann Band for free from 4 to 5. It's always, there are always a lot of good rockist Irish music. The other things going on with Historic Red Hook right now is they got a grant to, it's actually a donation, to digitize all of the copies of the Red Hook Journal and Observer. So it's like 1859 up until 19, I can't remember what. But it's great and it's searchable. So if you, I don't know, want to look at what your grandmother's high school graduation photo looked like or, you know, just happen to wonder what happened on your birthday, right in 1860, you can go and check that out. So go to historicredhook.com and there's just lots of great exploring to do there. Claremont, this Saturday at 11:00 AM, there's a walking tour of the Claremont grounds with the staff. So if you wandered around there and wondered like, oh, what are these foundations? Or, oh, what's the deal with this path or this garden or this whatever? This is your chance to find out. It's free, it's 11 o'clock, and just go to the Friends of Claremont website to register so they know how many people. The Bar Campus is reopened to the public, so there's lots of interesting things to see there in terms of gardens and sculpture. The Montgomery Place grounds are spectacular and definitely worth a wander. There's so much cool stuff going on at Rufford Albana that I won't talk about it. Just go to the website and see. There's all sorts of tours and art and incredible place.
They expanded their outdoor space amazingly.
Oh, totally, yes. It's the whole hillside, you know.
And the views.
Yeah, and the collaboration with the Thomas Cole site. So you're really getting a lot of bang for your buck with that. And the library has spectacular things going on, as always. Mondays at 3 o'clock, there's crafts at the gazebo. Wednesdays, there's Storytime with Ms. Beth, and that's at 10:30 in the morning for tots, 11:15 for preschoolers. And I'm not sure what time the storytime is for people who are solidly middle-aged, but I'm looking to find out. The summer reading program is pretty cool. It's called Take a Tale, and it's mystery books. So you go in, there's a whole table of books that are wrapped, and they're labeled for like various ages. So you have no idea what you're getting when you get it. So feel lucky.
You get a great one.
You spun the wheel a little more. If you need a break during tagselling, you spent too much money and you just need to like slow your roll, there's the Maceup's Fable Puppet Show at the library on the 31st from 11 to noon. Hey, Joshua, what's your favorite fable?
I like The Seven Blind Men and the Elephant.
That's a good one.
That one really describes the human condition to me the best. Nobody's got the whole picture, and we're all kind of confused. And we only get the truth by combining our subjective viewpoints. How about you, Emery Allen?
I have the Fox and the Lion, the Fox and the Dapes. I was trying, describing. There's no news on the Doc in Tivoli Days as yet. The big news is not the ticks. The ticks seem to be a little sleepy. Big news is the poison ivy. And if anybody can tell me their best way to smudge poison ivy between your toes, please. That's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As we were talking about earlier, there is going to be some code enforcement going on throughout the village. I wrote an email a few weeks ago to the community to invite everyone to look around on their property and also to contact the village if they had anything that they were wondering about, is this or is this not a violation? So Gary Beck will be seen around the village. And, you know, we're here to work with property owners, but we do have an obligation to uphold the code, and so that will be happening. We've been talking about Yard Sale Day all evening. Is there a pie contest this year?
Oh, yeah.
Back to you for the pie contest.
Oh, pie contest, I believe it takes place at noon at the bakery. There's a sign up sheet. And it's always fun and delicious and draws quite a crowd.
High stakes, very competitive.
High stakes, they're so competitive. Beware the 12-year-olds. Also, the judges can be bribed.
So, yeah, in the middle of our Yard Sale Day, we have the pie contest. We'll pray for good weather on the 31st. And again, it's not too late. You have right up until the end of that week, the Friday, to come in and register your yard sale. And if you don't live in the village and you want a spot, we do offer some spots out here in the village hall parking lot. So come in and turn your stuff into money.
And the Yeti Day will be followed two weeks later with the dumpster?
Well, that unfortunately is my segue, so thank you for that. Despite all the effort, we've been unable to set up Cleanup Day again this year. Last year, it was because of COVID and the companies would not send their personnel out. This year, interestingly, is because the haulers have told me they don't have enough people working. And those sanitation folks are not, you know, minimum wage folks. And those companies don't have enough workers to take on a special event. So that's what we got stuck with. I'm as disappointed as anyone else, and I know I've been hearing from people who, when they hear this, they're very disappointed. It's been a great thing we've done for the last several years. We will continue to try. I've been bothering these companies, and if anything changes, they're going to let me know. But for now, they don't have enough staff to do the event. So sit tight, and we hope to get to it later in the fall, next spring. We'll keep trying.
There is a town recycling center that is an option. You just have to transport it there.
Yeah. Yep, I believe it's still $15 a year. So any resident of the town, including everyone here in the village, can go to Town Hall in Red Oak, pay your $15. And then every Saturday and Wednesday, you can drive in your items to the center there. I just want to give a little shout out to Linda Hollick, who has been our new director of the Tivoli Community Garden and is doing an outstanding job. And I know that because I haven't heard from her in a long time. And that's great because I'm busy. And go by Pine Street, enjoy the garden. It's just wonderful. It's been going out, it's in its ninth year, so next year will be 10 years since we built the community garden. So I want to thank Linda and all the gardeners. And yeah, 10 years, blink. Yeah, it's a lot of tomatoes. We are still taking signups for the Tivoli Rec Camp. What's our deadline for that?
26.
26. So we are still planning on the Tivoli Rec Camp running August 9th for two weeks, 9 to 2 over at Memorial Park. We are approaching maybe 30 children so far signed up. So don't be that parent who gets caught at the end when their kid says, I didn't get signed up. What's wrong with you, right? It's happened, it's happened. So we really look forward to doing that. We've got some old, former councilors, new people, so...
None of them are old.
None of them are old, they're former, yes.
Seasoned.
Seasoned. So that's our Tivoli Children's Rec Camp back this year. Again, another thing we didn't get to do last summer because of the pandemic. Parking, there has been a strange habit settling in, particularly on Montgomery Street and Spring Street, of cars parked backwards. And what I mean by that is you're not allowed to park against traffic. You're supposed to pull over to the right, which is to say on Montgomery Street, where we have east side parking, your car needs to be pointed north. And I keep finding a lot pointing south.
I was following the trend.
Yeah. It started one or two, and the other morning I counted six. So that is not legal, you can't get a ticket. I believe the logic is, you know, to do that, you're sort of pulling in and out of head on traffic, right? I think that's, even on a sleepy street sometimes, yeah. So just wanted to mention that to folks to take the time, turn your car around, check out your neighbors' parking lot.
I'd like to interrupt you, not with a U-turn.
Not with a U-turn.
Spring Street, in fact, does have a cul-de-sac at the end.
That's right.
That you can use when you want to turn around to go back down Spring Street to park legally.
Yeah.
I appreciate that because I'm...
Good call.
It's a nice cul-de-sac.
I love that, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Spring Street.
So thoughtful parking, please. Karen Coranna, our Eagle Scout, who put in the Gaga Ball Court over at the park. Thrilled to say I've seen it being used by people. I didn't know anything about Gaga Ball till Karen came along. And I also wanted to let the public and the board know that Karen ended up raising some extra money that he didn't spend on the construction. And he's donated about $200 to the Tivoli Rec Camp.
Awesome.
So a wonderful, wonderful thing, community project. And he's got some good community spirit in that young man, so we really appreciate that. And I want to congratulate and thank Karen for his generosity.
Also, it's good for celebrity mud wrestling with the weather we're having, so.
I want to remind folks that the main way that we communicate with the village is the village email list, and you can sign up for that on the homepage of the website. That is really where, if we've got something important to tell the community, that's where we blast it out. There are still people who aren't signed up, so help spread the word if you're not signed up. Or you can sign up your friends without them knowing, you know. Let's see, Monday night, the new fire truck finally drove into the village of Tivoli. And this is the fire truck to replace the one that we lost in the fire on July 5th, 2019. So that was two years and three weeks from the fire till the new truck came in. It is a beauty. It was mostly insurance money, the value of the old truck. And we did borrow money to get an expanded cab, so six firefighters in full gear can ride in that cab. It's very roomy. I hope we take this one out for Winter Fest this year because you could fit about eight plush Santas. You could fit a lot of Santas in this truck. So congratulations to the fire department. Hats off to Chief Hildenbrandt for, I mean, that guy's been working for two years and three weeks like the devil. So it's a really fabulous thing. And they're going to be having a wet down in, let's see, September 26th. And that is something like the christening of a ship. They're going to pull out the new truck, other fire companies come. I'm sure there'll be food, it'll be a celebration, so look forward to that at the end of September. The water tower, the old water tower, water tower demolition update. It's been postponed, so for months, we thought that was going to be in the second half of July. And the contractor has, it could be a little more responsive, but we're on top of them. The main thing, though, is in order to demolish it, it needs to be drained. In order to be drained, it needs to be isolated. And there is a valve that would be used to do that that is leaking. So the valve has to be replaced, that's a small job. Then we can isolate the tank and drain. So we were set to go first week of August, but Children's Rec Camp, and it doesn't seem like the best idea to have the water tower being taken apart piece by piece when our young Tivolians are playing 100 yards off. So we've informed the contractor... So we've informed the contractor that they're not going to start till after the camp. So the latest, hopefully it will change again. August 23rd, the beginning of the demo, that's supposed to take about a week to two weeks, weather depending. And that crane we had come in when we built the new tower in the fall, there will be a crane of similar dimensions coming in. It'll be set over the ice rink it was. The area's going to be fenced off from the community garden to the basketball court. The half pipe will be offline, the bus stop will be open. So we are going to lose some of those facilities for two, two and a half weeks. So that's the water tower. So with all of that, that concludes our meeting. And this is the time when we offer the public a chance for public comment on anything on the sun that you'd care to talk about or ask us about. And trustees, if you have anything else we could get to, feel free. And we don't leave till someone says something.
Can we go back to that MOU thing? And finish the Musketeers theme song?
MOU, that's. I'll do those more often.
Keep your eyes focused on the village webpage and the Tivoli Street Painting Pen webpage, and we will be announcing a date shortly for the street painting festival.
I got one thing. Okay, you can go to Historic Red Hook and sign up for the newsletter because today the new newsletter came out, and there's a big article about Peter de la Bagger, who is nominally our founding father, who is sort of an interesting and opportunistic charmer.
Speculator?
Speculator, among other things, snake oil salesman. He gets credit for having been the first white man to measure the height of Old Oak Mountain incorrectly. But he's, he arrived here after the French Revolution and made quick friends with the living students and then made a plan for a lovely village down on the river. And it quickly fell apart, and he died broke in New Orleans not long after. But anyway, Historic Red Hook acquired a letter of his written in 1794. And it's really, it's really cool, and it's transcribed as part of the newsletter. So you can go and sign up for the newsletter and read this and learn a little bit about our history here.
Where did the letter come from?
It was in an auction somewhere out west.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Just random.
Just random, yeah.
Without giving it away, do you want to touch on some of the content of the letter? Or should we not blow the surprise?
Well.
Spoiler alert.
A tiny spoiler. So it's this letter where he's writing to a woman and he's saying, you know, I hope you never need, you know, you never have any of the ailments that would necessitate you using this product, but should you? There's this amazing product, it's called Ode Maliss, and it treats, you know, headaches, sprained legs, backaches, windy colic. All these things, you either take a teaspoon of it, you put a little bit in wine, you put it on a sugar cube. So, yeah, it just, it goes on and on in this really sort of flowery language. It's great.
That sounds fascinating.
Yeah, so and a year later, here he was in Tivoli.
Excellent. And if you ever want to see his original signature, there are two excellent copies of his plan for, it wasn't going to be called Tivoli, it was going to be called something.
No, it was going to be called Tivoli.
It was going to be.
It has a reference to Emperor Hadrian's pleasure palace.
Yes, I've been there. There are two copies of that. There's one at the Duchess County Clerk's office, and there's one in the mayor's office on the second floor here. So if you ever want to stop by, we keep it locked up safe. But it's a really interesting sort of product of the Enlightenment. It's very, you know, right angles and.
But super utopian as well, right? Different streets laid out.
Kind of panned out.
Kind of, well, yeah. So there was like Peace Street and Commerce Street and Laws Street and Friendship Street, which actually did get built, so.
Excellent.
Didn't pay a lot of attention to the topography, so not so much.
Lots are laid out so beautifully, but he kept selling the same ones over and over and
Excellent. Any comment from the public? Claire Cora?
I, when you had brought up about the truck being delivered, the new fire truck, which is amazing, it's just outstanding. And, you know, a lot of the guys are with Garrison this evening going through it. But I just thought I would share now with others who were on film about, it's on the sign, but Chief Hildenbrandt being named to Duchess County Volunteer Firefighters Association Firefighter of the Year. And it was a wonderful ceremony evening and dinner, and he's so deserving of it.
He's so deserving. And it was a nice event the other week, and proclamations from Tivoli Red Hook Congressman Delgado.
Yes, Sue Sarino and Marcus Molner.
So congratulations to our fabulous fire chief. All right, with that, I think we'll adjourn. It's 7:42. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.